And I'm sorry, I'm Denny Elliott and I'm the interim Regional Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs and Vice Provost here at USF St. Pete Campus. I'd like to thank our co-sponsors for tonight's City Council Candidate Forum. That's USFSP Student Government, USFSP Center for Civic Engagement, the St. Petersburg Downtown Partnership, Local Shops One, the League of Women Voters in St. Petersburg area. And now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. McLaughlin, Associate Professor of Political Science and the founding director for the Center for Civic Engagement.
Thank you so much, Vice Chancellor Elliott. Good evening and welcome to the 2021 City of St. Petersburg City Council Candidate Forum. This forum is being conducted under the direction of the League of Women Voters of the St. Petersburg area. The League is a nonpartisan political organization which encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Their mission is simple: empowering voters defending democracy. St. Petersburg City Council members are elected to serve four-year terms and are limited to two full successive terms of office. In the upcoming general election, there are two candidates running in districts one, four, six, and eight. All St. Petersburg voters, regardless of what district they live in, will be voting for one candidate in each district. So it's important for us to learn about all of the candidates. You will see two candidates on the ballot from District Two, but one of the candidates dropped out, so that race has already been decided. Tonight, you'll meet all of those candidates except candidate Bobby Shay Lee, who had a previous commitment and could not attend. The voter registration deadline is coming up soon. It's Monday, October 4th, 2021. If you plan to mail your ballot, please mail it at least two weeks before November 2nd. You can request a mail ballot by visiting the Supervisor of Elections website, votepanellis.com, or calling 727-464-VOTE. Mail ballots can be dropped off at any of the three Supervisor of Elections offices during normal business hours. I'm pleased to introduce the three student government leaders who will be asking the questions tonight: Veronica Jimenez, Tara Rosenbaum, and Sean Schrader. Let's go over the ground rules for the forum. Tonight's program is going to be consisting of two segments. Segment one will be the District One and Four candidates, and segment two will be the candidates from District Six and Eight. The candidates will each have one minute for their replies, and each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. The order of the candidates was chosen randomly. Questions for the candidates were solicited from students and from the general public when they registered for this event. So let's get started. The first question is going to be asked by Veronica of Candidate Gertes.
Thank you. What makes you best qualified candidate for the Office of City Councilor?
Thanks Veronica, and thanks to all our sponsors for having me. Listen, this is brand new in District One, a special election, and I think there's really two things that I look at and got me excited to do this and believe that I'm the best candidate to do this. And one is my financial background as a financial advisor, helping our citizens and businesses through great times and tough times, and understanding what it looks like from a budget, balancing budget. That's a practice I want to be able to take in day one. The second is a little further back. It's my coaching background. I'm a college baseball coach, college baseball swimmer, college, and have coached throughout my entire adult life. And bringing people together around one idea, I think, is something we really need on City Council these days. And I'm excited to do both of those things day one. So I really appreciate the question.
Thank you. Candidate Hanowitz?
Hi, thank you so much. So I never imagined that I'd be running for City Council. What brought me to the decision was my work as the President of Crescent Lake Neighborhood Association. It's there where I saw that my experience as an attorney, as a former state and federal prosecutor, could help our community. And I've been doing that since 2016, and I've been working on issues with our community, from everything to transportation issues, to safety issues, to infrastructure issues. I've worked with our community to help bridge our community and our zoned elementary school, to take in mentors to the zoned elementary school, build a learning garden. So all the things that I've already been doing in the community, I would love to continue the work that I've been doing on City Council, and I look forward to that opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Candidate Mullins?
Sure. Thanks, everybody, for participating in this. My name's Tom Mullins. I think I'm differentiated in a number of ways as a candidate. I am not a politician. I'm a longtime senior executive at Raymond James. And probably the first thing that differentiates me is the fact that I've actually been involved personally in some of the largest job creation events that have ever happened in this area. In particular, Raymond James, which obviously has thousands and thousands of jobs. I didn't do that all by myself, but I was part of the team that grew the place over 30 years. And I also raised the initial capital for Legion Airlines to expand to Florida, which rescued the St. Pete Clearwater Airport and created hundreds of jobs there. The other ways I think I've differentiated, I headed the infrastructure and transport practice at Raymond James. So just by virtue of that, I think I have a lot of experience in those sectors, which are right on point with the challenges that the City Council will be facing in coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. And Tara will ask the next question of Candidate Mullins.
Thank you. Candidate Mullins, what are your top three priorities if you are elected?
Sure, I would, I've got a few more than three that I'd like to do, but if I had to kind of force rank them, I think the, one of the first things would be to really protect taxpayers. The, St. Pete does have one of the higher property tax rates in the state of Florida. The amount of actual cash collected from citizens by the city over the past eight years has nearly doubled. So I want to make sure that the taxpayers are getting proper value for that money. Other things I'd like to do, I think I was the first candidate to really call for a do-over on the Tropicana Field Redevelopment Plans. I think that we really need to bring a more transformational concept for that site, that brings its own jobs engine. And I'd say the, you know, the last thing is really, I think we have some very good ideas on affordable housing. I think that can be done without disturbing the character of existing neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. And Candidate Gertes?
Yeah, I would agree with Mr. Mullins that there's a lot, but top three certainly. I think number one, infrastructure. We've got to finish the plan that the city has over the next 20 years to fix our infrastructure. We've made, we have not made the investment over the last 40 years. We've got to make the investment over the next 10. Otherwise, we're going to have significantly worse problems than we've already had. So we've got to finish our infrastructure. We've got to focus on affordable housing. You know, we've got a housing crisis where people are overburdened, whether you own or rent in St. Petersburg, on their housing payments. And we've got to find, and I think we have lots of tools to fix that. We just got to, we got to continue to use them. Last and certainly but not least, we have to focus on our sustainability and resiliency, making sure that we're protecting our environment. We live on a peninsula, on a peninsula. And we got to make sure we're doing everything we can to make sure our community is staying safe from not just a big storm, from the little ones too.
Thank you. And Candidate Hanowitz?
Thank you. So I think the first thing is affordable housing. I mean, not only do we have a crisis here in St. Petersburg, obviously, it's nationwide. There are many barriers right now to affordable housing, whether it's high demand, low supply, housing costs rising faster than our incomes, and, you know, the costs associated with constructing affordable housing. So I think that's the first thing we have to tackle. Infrastructure, I think our infrastructure was developed between the 1930s and the 1980s. So like maintaining an aging house, you have to replace its aging components, and that's where we are in the city. And that is related to our resiliency and our sustainability. And then last but not least, obviously, is, look, we are a growing city, and we have to keep what makes St. Pete special. So we are going to have that challenge and how to manage that growth, but still keep what makes us want to live here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sean will ask the next question to Candidate Hanowitz.
Thank you. How do you plan to address the public transportation needs of people who reside in affordable housing, including those residents who will be living in the Tyrone area?
Yeah, that's a great question, because I think affordable housing is completely tied to transportation. And right now, we're doing our Vision 2050 process, where we're going to be looking at the zoning in our city and looking at areas where we can upzone and include more housing. And I think corridors are key in that, because that's where you're going to have the transportation, and that's where you can also have more multifamily units and other types of units for families to live. I think in terms of, I like the fact that we have our rapid bus transit that's happening on First Ave. North and going from downtown all the way to the beaches. I think we need to do more options for people to use different types of transportation, complete streets. We, as neighborhoods here, encourage the Complete Streets program here on the MLK, so that way people could safely ride their bikes or walk to where they're going, whether it's for fun or for work. So I think we need to make those investments, because they're tied to affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Mullins?
Sure, and just again, a reminder, I, for nearly 20 years, I headed the Transport and Infrastructure Practice at Raymond James, where I've developed some very good expertise in transport matters, especially on the financing side. I think I'm the, probably the only candidate in the race that's personally dealt with the global infrastructure funds that provide the capital for much of the infrastructure being built, this transport infrastructure being built in the U.S. today. You know, St. Pete, given the current sort of densities and structure of it, the real key to a surface transport network is frequency. And, you know, I think that's been the problem. That's why we have some of the low ridership, is there just isn't sufficient route frequency, schedule frequency, for the buses to be a reliable choice for people. And that is the first item to fix, I think, in transit.
Thank you. Candidate Gertes?
Awesome question. I live in the Tyrone area, so this hits home. This is in my district. The BRT is going to help with this. And so getting that done, finished, on both First Avenue North, First Avenue South, that's going to help. I was talking with Evan Maury, Transportation and Parking in the City of St. Pete, last week. We sat down, we talked about these things. We've got to add fast alternate routes for the BRT. We've got to, we've got to add north-south routes. And it can't just be 34th Street, where I know a lot of focus wants to be. It's got to be 66th Street. It's got to be Park Street, where we're adding, where you can catch the BRT. So you can come from north or south, grab First Avenue South or First Avenue North, and jump on the BRT. That's how you're going to make this, grow it fast from a bus standpoint. Last but not least, certainly, is Complete Streets, making sure that we're going all the way on Central Avenue for a bike lane. So again, you can grab the BRT anywhere you are on the west side of St. Pete. It's a big deal.
Veronica will ask the next question of Candidate Gertes.
Thank you. What issue is important to your district? Why is it important? And how would you address the issue?
Awesome. I think we've got a really unique opportunity in District One. Other than the Trop site, I think District One, quite possibly, and I'm working with Liz Abernathy on this, might have the most commercial space open as of today in District One. And so if you look at the Raytheon property, you look at the old Walmart property on Tyrone Boulevard, some properties inside of the Tyrone area in 66th Street, there is a unique opportunity to develop on the west side, Central Avenue, on the west side, as you're near the beaches, where we can, we can have this beautiful, growing business center on the west side. I think sometimes you'll hear it throughout the city, the west side gets forgotten a little bit. Sometimes when it talks about building out businesses, especially small businesses. And I really want to focus on that, trying to get a Central Avenue partnership and a west side partnership to really help grow our small businesses, because I think we've got a really, really cool, unique opportunity.
Thank you. Candidate Hanowitz?
I just noticed I was muted, sorry. In my district, and my district includes areas like historical northeast, where, you know, they're lower-lying areas. You know, we have some infrastructure issues, obviously, and flooding issues and stormwater issues. And it goes back to what I discussed, is a priority, which is replacing and repairing our aging components. Right now, the city recently approved the Integrated Water Resources Master Plan, and it's going to be a huge deal. I mean, this is like $2 billion to $3 billion of investment to make sure that we have, and this includes, by the way, resiliency and sustainability, to make sure that we can take care of the flooding issues, the stormwater issues we're having, and heavy rain events when we have hurricanes. I think that's the main priority in our district, is our infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. And Candidate Mullins?
Sure, two things I'd say for District Four. First is, I think we have a lot of neighborhoods that are quite affluent in District Four, you know, Old Northeast, Crescent Lake, places like that. But we have a lot of neighborhoods that are, you know, that are classic working-class neighborhoods. And I think, you know, the most important thing we can do is provide really the best possible business climate, the best possible climate for small business and big business to thrive in St. Petersburg, so that, so that those folks have a wide variety of employment opportunities and that they have, that the job market stays tight enough, it's quite good right now, stays tight enough to give them, you know, leverage for wage increases and, you know, better working conditions. The second thing is really just getting people comfortable in our district that affordable housing in St. Pete can be achieved without disturbing the terrific character and consistent zoning and neighborhood character we have in a lot of the neighborhoods in Old Northeast and Crescent Lake and other parts of District Four. Sorry, I ran over a little bit Veronica, but that's my answer.
Thank you very much. Tara will ask the next question of Candidate Mullins.
Thank you. What issues do you think should be addressed regarding law enforcement?
I mean, with law enforcement, we, our campaign website has some content on that. And I think there's a, you know, there's a real fine line to walk there. I do, I absolutely sympathize with, you know, some of the folks that were protesting last summer with the, you know, the George Floyd killing and all that. It's, there has to be, you know, a way for the, the police have to, you know, have to find ways to manage public safety without, without having, you know, some unintended consequences. At the same time, any kind of police reform, a lot of the police reform ideas that I've heard raised are simply things that make it harder to catch bad guys. And that's, that is not the way to go. I think we, you know, you cannot create a situation where the police appear to have a hand tied behind their back. I think that will just tempt further escalation of situations.
Thank you. Sorry, I was muted. And Candidate Gertes?
So I think first and foremost, having been endorsed by the police, met with Chief Holloway, met with Sasha Lohn, we don't have the problems in St. Petersburg that I think get put on the television screen. Now, that's not to say that we don't have things to work on, but we fared much better, and that's because of the leadership and the communication between our communities and the police officers. Our number one issue for policing is recruiting good officers and retaining them. The police, our police force has done an amazing job of being diverse, matching its community, and being out, walking, stopping, talking to our community. We need to continue to do that. And we've got to continue to support them, but what we need to do is be able to continue to give them the tools to recruit and retain amazing police officers. And then I know they don't have a problem getting rid of ones that we need to. And so we've got to make sure that we continue to have that clean slate with our, with our police officers.
Thank you. And Candidate Hanowitz?
Thank you. So as a former state and federal prosecutor, I will tell you that this is an issue that's within the whole criminal justice system. For decades, our communities and our nation has been dumping everything, whether it's homelessness, whether it's mental health, whether it's drug problems. That's, you don't go through the criminal justice system to solve those issues. So I think our community has done a great job the last few years. Chief Holloway has taken a approach to do community policing. They've done a great job with the Community Assistance and Life Liaison Program that they started to take some of those issues that should not be dealt by the police and have the, provide the mental health, the intervention, the dealing with the homelessness issues, putting that in the right hand, so the police officers can deal with the issues that they're trained to do. And I also think that we need to continue doing a great job at retaining and recruiting police officers that are reflective of our community. I'm Hispanic. I love to see the fact that we have a very diverse, and we are going to continue to have a more diverse workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean is going to ask the next question of Candidate Hanowitz.
Thank you. A USF student asked, "I hope to stay in St. Petersburg after graduating. What plans do you have to make the downtown area more accessible for young adults starting off in the workforce?" This includes housing.
I think that's a great question, and I will tell you right now, with the redevelopment of the Tropicana Field that's happening, we're going to have those opportunities. You know, City Council passed a Community Benefits Agreement ordinance, where you can tackle those issues in terms of affordable housing, job programs, and different community benefits that if there is development, we can make sure that there are agreements that are in place to provide that housing, to provide that job force training. And that's going to be in downtown, and that is honestly going to transform downtown. So I think those opportunities are going to happen pretty soon. I will also tell you right now, in terms of continuing development, there is, money's coming from the American Rescue Plan that the City Council is looking to apply to affordable housing and get out there to help the community. And there are also rental assistance programs out there too. So I think we're going to be doing a lot in affordable housing in the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Mullins?
Sure, yeah. When you're, I mean, when you're a young person, you need two things. You need a job, and you need a place to live. You know, I spoke about, on the job front, making St. Pete, you know, creating the most healthy possible climate, you know, for business and job creation is very important. That's for one of those objectives. On the, on the affordable housing side, though, I do want to shade a little bit differently what Lizette said. Taking money from one taxpayer, giving it to another in the form of a housing subsidy, in my book, that should not be defined as affordable housing. Affordable housing is really only cured by moving the supply curve out and increasing the supply of housing, really, in all categories. And the, and the thing I'm trying to get across is that there are, there are ways to do that without disturbing the character of existing neighborhoods. Every dead mall, every underperforming strip center, every, you know, dormant school and church campuses, you know, is potentially a site for redevelopment. And, and again, that's, I think that will help contain some of the growth in housing costs.
Thank you. Candidate Gertes?
It's a really good question. Listen, born and raised here, and listen, first and foremost, we want that student to stay here. We want that student to stay here. And so we've got to continue to work on affordable housing. And here's the deal, you know, when I went to school and moved back here, you weren't necessarily, and that was even 15, 20 years ago, you weren't necessarily going to move into downtown, but having the opportunity to have a job, a well-paying job, where you could continue to move your way up, whether it's an employee or a small business owner, that's the opportunity I want them to have in St. Pete. And they, they might be in a, they might be in a community right outside of downtown, and as that grows, they're working in downtown. Downtown is a much harder conversation when it comes to housing, because of how built out it is. The community surrounding it, we need to continue to focus on affordable housing, so you've got the opportunity to get to downtown. That might not be the answer, wanting to move from USF St. Pete to downtown automatically, that the person wants, but the ability to go from one to the next is where the key is.
Veronica will ask the next question of Candidate Gertes.
Thank you. How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making processes in our city?
I love this question. Thanks for it. You know, I was just talking to a resident in Yoclebas Estates who, their neighborhood, because of where they're situated, wasn't asked about something, because it technically wasn't their neighborhood. And so I think here's the biggest thing. What I've tried to do over the last 100 days is to reach out as many community members, community leaders, and make sure that they've got my cellphone, they've got my email. There's an open line of communication, so when things are going on, we can communicate. The big, one of the biggest things I see from city to citizen is there is this, it's like the telephone game, something, some things get lost in translation. And I think that's on us as City Council members to make sure that we're communicating with our citizens, with our community leaders, so they can disseminate the information. And so, you know, when I think about my daily job, it's making sure I'm communicating with our citizens as much as I can, as often as possible, so that those types of things don't happen.
Thank you. Candidate Hanowitz?
That's a great question, and I will tell you, since being president of Crescent Lake Neighborhood Association, it's one of the key things that neighborhoods do, neighborhood associations do, which is actually connect residents to what's happening in the city. And we are really unique in St. Pete in the fact that we have extremely active neighborhoods. And having that communication and making sure that it gets to the citizens, and not just get there, but actually explaining why it's important. You know, when we had the issue here on resurfacing of MLK, I made sure that everyone in our, in my community knew why it was important, because of safety and that their voice was going to be heard. And let me tell you, when the city came and made their presentation to the neighborhood, and we first thought, oh, they just run us through rubber stampers, they actually listened to the feedback and changed what they were planning to do, and that was based on the input of citizens. So I want to continue that, and I wanted to find ways to continue how we can even reach more people through different organizations in the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Candidate Mullins?
Yeah, I don't have too much to add to Copley and Lizette's responses there, but I, you know, I would say that probably the 80/20 rule applies here. And, you know, probably 20% of the people provide 80% of the, sort of the activist input to City Council members and other city officials. So you have to be careful that you're still sort of managing for the, you know, the greatest good for the greatest number here. You have to make sure that, you know, that 80% of the people who, who aren't speaking up, that their, you know, sort of interests and considerations are, you know, are still incorporated into, into what you're doing. And the corollary to that is really two-way communication is important too. I think when there's highly organized, very passionate groups that, that, you know, have an issue, but it may not be something that's really the best idea for the greatest number of people. I mean, you really have to use strong leadership, communication skills, convey whatever data is needed to, you know, to really try to bring those activist people on board and make them understand why they're, you know, why, you know, we really need to think about the interests of the whole city. Thanks.
Thank you. This is going to be our last round of questions before the closing statements for Districts One and Four. Tara will ask the next question of Candidate Mullins.
Thank you. What do you think the city can do to help local small business?
Sure, Tara, I think, you know, look, a lot of it is really just looking at... looking at the same thing that, you know, that, that would be beneficial for, for any size business. You know, it starts with, I, I mean, the things that make businesses hire people and, you know, and pay them well and give them great employment opportunities are, first, it's, you're, you're creating a, an affordable sort of cost of doing business. You're not harassing businesses that your regulatory initiatives are, are thoughtful and have kind of a light touch. You're keeping, you know, the, keeping housing affordable is super important because if housing prices rise, then you have to pay people more. And there's sort of a cycle of cost that, that goes in there and discourages business expansion. And, you know, and last is really just the overall, keeping the overall tax base reasonable and competitive is, is what fosters business, business growth. Thanks.
Thank you. And candidate Gertis.
Yeah, I'm a, I am a local small business. So this, this hits home to me. And you know, if there were one, one area where I thought there was an opportunity with the administration over the last twelve or eighteen months, and Mayor Christman has endorsed me, you know, we go back a long way. But one place I would give him feedback is small businesses. And I'm going to steal Lizette's idea. I've, I've stolen it. I'm not doing it currently with, with neighborhoods and, and do that with small businesses. I talked about the Central Avenue Partnership. I'd love to start on the West Side. But making sure we have these pockets of business, of small business owners, where we're communicating with them on a regular basis, getting feedback and input on what's going on with our small businesses, what's happening on the streets, not only in the business, but out in front of the business, which is a big deal in downtown. Making sure that we're, we create those pockets, so we're getting that information, I think, because then we can go to action. I think the big thing again goes back, if we have the communication, then we can go to action.
Thank you. And candidate Hanowitz.
I think it's a great question because you know what, St. Pete, part of what makes St. Pete special is all those cool businesses that we see everywhere. And those small businesses are the lifeblood. And, and frankly, we want those businesses to grow because then they can be as big as they tech data as in the cables in our city. So in terms of the small businesses that we have, the city has what's called the greenhouse, which is amazing. And it helps businesses, whether it's consulting, it provides them mentors. It allows them to have mentors help with business plans. And they're actually increasing, they're making another location in South St. Pete now. So it's closer to areas that really need it because there was a study recently that their small minority businesses are not getting the contracts from the city that they should. So I think it's really important to make sure that we also tap into those minority businesses and grow them. So we have lots of opportunities there. And I, I would love to work with small business owners to improve our processes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to have our closing statements from our district one and four candidates before we move on to district six and eight. So our first closing statement from this segment will be candidate Gertis.
Again, thank you so much for having me. Excited to be here. Excited to be with all the other candidates that I, that I really do feel blessed to be on the same forum with just a bunch of smart people that care about our city. And that's first and foremost. Listen, born and ra, born and raised here, raising my family here, of my three-year-old daughter, my two-year-old son, small business owner. This is one of those, I, I get to raise my hand to be able to do this. And I'm super excited to, to make a run at it. And, you know, we've had some amazing support from the police, the firefighters, SEIU, five sitting council members, Charlie Justice, Darryl Rousson. You know, we've, we've, we've been across the board with the city, trying to make sure that we can walk in day one, be prepared to do this job. And so I love this town. I'm not going anywhere. I want my kids to move back here. And that's the reason I ended up running. So I, I just appreciate the opportunity and I appreciate the support. And thanks so much.
Our next closing statement will be from candidate Mullins.
Sure. Thanks again for everyone's participation. I, this, there's never been as good a time, I think, as, as the present really to observe the importance of competent municipal governance. I've traveled a lot over the last twenty-five years for my job at Raymond James. And it was impossible not to notice, even before COVID, the, you know, the, the decline in quality of life in many of our largest and wealthiest cities in the country. You know, I, I mean, across the board, San Francisco, Los Angeles, Chicago, Baltimore, New York, Philly. All of these cities, you know, tended to have a set of policies they were following that were producing very bad crime problems, flight of businesses and professionals, very high taxes, failing schools. And there's a, there's a set of policies that were popular, but were clearly not working, that were very similar as you go from one of those cities to the next one. And part of my motivation for running here is really to prevent that same sort of progressive playbook from being implemented here, where I believe it would do exactly the same damage that it's done in, in some of these other cities. Thank you for, again, your participation.
And candidate Hanowitz.
Well, thank you, everyone, for having me. First of all, I'm a daughter of Cuban exiles. I was raised by a single mom with the help of my grandmother. I was born in Tampa, was raised in Miami, and life brought me back to the Tampa Bay area. Been in St. Pete since two thousand and six. And for the college students out there, I've, I've basically walked in your shoes. You know, I went, I worked full-time since the age of seventeen. I went to school at night. I got my bachelor's at night while working full-time. I got an MBA while working full-time. And it, you know, was, I was thirty years old when I went to law school. So I bring my life experiences to city council. I bring my experience as an attorney, as a former state and federal prosecutor, and I bring my experience as a community leader, serving my community since two thousand and sixteen. And I want to continue that service. I want to be a voice for all. And I would hope that you trust me with your vote in November, because I would love to represent you and the city of St. Petersburg on city council. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much to our candidates from district one and four. And viewers at home, please stay tuned because we're going to move into the next segment with candidates from district six and eight. Thank you so much. Okay, it looks like we have everyone here and we're ready to go for candidates from district six and eight. Thank you so much for being here. The first question will be asked by Veronica for candidate Danner.
Thank you. How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making processes in our city?
Thank you. That's a good question. It is one of the staples of my candidacy to reconnect to the neighborhoods. We've got a fantastic network of neighborhoods and small business district associations that for several reasons of COVID quarantining, being one of them, we've, we've lost that connection, that communication. I've been involved in several ways as a neighborhood association president. I started a small business district. I've watched this city grow by listening to and being part of the process to listen to those neighbors, listen to the people as to what kind of city they want. And, and pretty much what we've built over the last twenty, thirty years as a result of that. So it's definitely important to me to reconnect, to get the neighborhoods back involved, listening to city hall, city hall, listening to them, and making them feel not just listening to, but their ideas are valued and that they can become, come into fruition because they are important. We, we've got the network to do it. We just need to reengage again.
Thank you. Candidate Driscoll.
Thank you. And thanks to everyone who is hosting us, frankly, the Women Roters and all the sponsors. It's great to be here. Engaging with the community and involving them in the decision-making process is one of the things that I have worked on the most during my first term on city council. From answering all of the phone calls and answering questions, seeking in ideas and addressing issues, to being out in the community, meeting with neighborhood associations, meeting with our business associations, and letting them know how they can be in, in, like, part of the process. In addition to taking their feedback myself, reminding everyone that all of our city council meetings, we have opportunities for people to come and speak and really be part of that process. I'm working on that right now, actually, to make sure that people can speak at an upcoming meeting. So it goes both ways. And I love doing that work for our city.
Thank you. Candidate Floyd.
Yeah. So again, thanks, everyone, for putting this on. I really appreciate this opportunity to be able to speak with people. And I think this is a perfect example of what we're talking about here in this question. So getting the community involved is of critical importance. If we really want to grow as a city, and we really want to make sure that we bring everyone along in that growth. In our campaign, we work hard to make sure that people are actually engaged and we talk to everyone. We've knocked on a lot of doors. I believe we should have to do that as city counselors as well and go out and talk to the community. All four connecting to the neighborhoods and the business associations. But I think more importantly than that, those are only the people who are able to get involved. We need to make sure that we talk to everyone in our city, those who are busy with life, work, whatever it is. And so I'll look to meet people where they are and try to bring them into the political process through things like participatory budgeting and making sure people know how to interact with their government. And I think that's the bare minimum we can do to make sure that everyone actually gets involved. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Summers.
Thank you for this important question. And I echo Richie's thanks and, you know, being here and being invited to speak. I can tell you that this is a big deal in district six. You know, we've been canvassing and, and phone banking. And many of our constituents don't even know who their representative is. And so, you know, it's about being present for the people. I think that is going to be one of my top priorities. You know, our city has a lot of resources. And, you know, things that could really benefit the homeowners, the, the, those who are looking to raise their human capital. But the people simply just don't know about a lot of the tools that already exist on our city's belt. And so I think being intentional, being an intentional bridge, a true champion for equity, those things are built in my DNA. They are, you know, attributes I plan to bring on day one, is, you know, being intentional about being that bridge. These are the rights of these constituents. These are their tax dollars. And a lot of times, they don't know how to make the best use of them. So, you know, let's canvas, let's phone bank after the election as well.
Tara will ask the next question of candidate Summers.
Thank you. What do you think the city can do to help small local business?
Ah, this is a great question. So if you've been following this summer, you know, I've been really passionate about local and small business being the heart and soul of our economy as we continue to grow and move forward. I think the focus has to be on, you know, utilizing, again, the tools that are in our tool belt. We have the small business enterprise. How can we ensure that more local businesses are having opportunities to, to, you know, raise their capital and understand, you know, how to get some of these bigger projects? And with the bigger projects, are we bringing in folks who are willing to serve St. Pete residents first? And, and train some of these smaller businesses? We got to look at those who have brick and mortar establishments. They don't have any type of tax caps. I know Mr. Mullins talked about that in the first, first half here. But these folks are stuck in a ten percent tax cap for their business, which may force a lot of them out of their brick and mortar by next year. And so we have to be, again, intentional about the way that we're approaching it and present. And it, it begins with talking to people.
Thank you. And candidate Danner.
Yes, thank you. As part of a group of people that created the Grand Central District, it was about eighty percent vacant at the time. And we encouraged the neighborhood surrounding those, that area to support small businesses. The small business owners live in that area. Right now, that's part of the longest walkable corridor in the state of Florida, from Thirty First Street to Beach Drive. There's six more miles of Central Avenue left. We can take that model and keep moving west, applying it as we move down to keep a longer and longer connection to the downtown and at the other end to the beaches. We also have the opportunity now on Thirty Fourth Street with so many vacant and under-valued retail stores and shopping centers. You've seen some of the improvements on the south end of Thirty Fourth Street. There's an opportunity there on the north side of Thirty Fourth Street, again, to create some, reinvent the way we do retail and business on that corridor.
Thank you. And candidate Driscoll.
Really are the lifeblood of our city. The dollars that, that go into the small businesses stay in our city. And we're, we're so lucky that we have a city that really does prioritize our small businesses and we celebrate that. And people from other cities, people from bigger cities like Orlando will come here because of that vibe that's created from our small business. The city has a great network of resources to assist our small businesses and grant programs and other resources in the greenhouse. And the greenhouse is actually a partnership that we have with the Chamber of Commerce, which also does a fantastic job of supporting our small businesses. So one of the things that I do is work with all of these different entities on a regular basis to see what the businesses need and how we can improve those resources to help them more directly. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Floyd.
Yeah. What's most important for our economic climate in the city, and, and that goes for small businesses, is that we have a workforce and just the everyday people of the city are able to afford to participate in the economy to their fullest potential. And so if we can invest in the people of the city to make sure that they're being paid high wages, their housing is affordable and sustainable, and that they have time, stable lives and time to spend with their family and friends, then they're going to create a good business economy. I mean, demand is going to come first and the businesses are going to be able to provide for that. And so when we're supporting our businesses in our city that employ local people that pay living wages, those businesses are going to do better. And in turn, all businesses are going to do better. If we can make sure that we're matching the skills of the workforce to the jobs that are being created and we're training for those, we're going to be able to build a much stronger economy that's going to help every business in the city.
Sean is going to ask the next question of candidate Floyd.
Thank you for a different type of question. If you could have dinner with one world leader, past or present, who would it be?
I did not come prepared for this. So I'm going to go with off the top of my head, Dr. King, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., I think would be my go-to. And I would do it because not just the message of equality that he brought and the message of, you know, actually organizing in the community that he brought, but in addition, the message of, you know, economic opportunity that he brought and that he really strove for. And so we forget, we remember him in the civil rights movement, but we forget that what he was doing when he was killed in Memphis was standing with sanitation workers on strike. And sanitation workers went on strike in St. Petersburg just a few weeks afterwards. And it was, you know, a pivotal moment in our city's history. It helped create and sustain the Florida Public Service Union that still exists in the city today. And so I think we could have a great conversation about, you know, the economic plight of people and civil rights. And I, so I, that's who my choice is.
Thank you. Candidate Summers.
Thank you. Reggie stole my MLK thunder. So I'm going to one-up him and say probably Jesus Christ. You know, if you know me, you know, I don't hide behind my faith at all. And I'm a proud Christian. And I think, you know, these are unprecedented times that we're living in. And I think, you know, in order to serve the public with all of the good and bad and negative and, you know, the monotony of public service, being grounded and rooted philosophically in something is, is paramount. And I think, you know, the principles of Christianity kind of help, you know, keep me even keeled and, you know, smiling all the time. But, you know, definitely thinking about, you know, fairness and justice, to do justice, to love mercy, to walk humbly, you know, with my neighbors and, and creators. So how do you apply that in the age of, you know, technology and gentrification? I mean, there's nothing in the Bible about iPads. I looked a couple of times. So would love to kind of have that conversation in the modern. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Danner.
Yeah, she definitely got a different type of question there. But I, I think it would be someone, probably like Nelson. probably like Nelson Mandela, someone who had lived through some incredible difficult times, a person who just persevered, never gave up. You know, his entire life was a battle for doing things that were right, was in prison, becomes president. It's just an amazing story of never giving up. And you can just read so many books and so many different things about all that he's gone through. It's an incredible example.
Thank you. Candidate Driscoll?
Thanks. I think the person that I would, I would most like to sit with for a while would be John Lewis. As someone who served through the civil rights movement and was such, such a leader in that capacity and then went on to serve our country in Congress for so many years. And the wisdom that he was able to impart, the leadership that he provided for others in Congress when it was time to really make things happen. I just remember I always followed him on Facebook. When he spoke, I listened. He led an incredible life. And it's just, you know, I have friends who were able to meet him. I was sorry that I never had a chance to, and that would be my one wish for sure.
Veronica will ask the next question of candidate Driscoll.
Thank you. What do you think is the most important environmental issue facing St. Petersburg? And how do you plan to address it?
It's well-known that, you know, climate change is, is creating sea level rise at a faster rate in St. Petersburg than it was before. So now it's always been an issue that's out there, but now that is becoming more and more urgent. And we see that in some of our coastal neighborhoods where they're experiencing sunny day flooding and real damage time after time, repetitive losses during big storms. And it is really, as a coastal community, I would say that it is the top priority that we have in terms of environmental issues. I'm really proud that as a member of the Health, Energy, Resilience and Sustainability Committee, as well as a member of City Council, we have been able to make some real progress in looking at how to change the way that we look at development and adaptation in order to deal with that issue today. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Floyd?
Yeah, unfortunately, when you say, you know, the one environmental issue that is most important to people in St. Petersburg, I unfortunately, I can't say that there is one because I think that they're all connected. And so climate change, if you have to go with one, because it affects so many other things. And so like Gina mentioned, there's tidal flooding going to increase fivefold in the future, just about a decade from now in St. Petersburg. And so that's going to be a huge issue. But there's also the, the, the storm factor and our resiliency that ties up into that. There's the inequity that's in environmental issues that are tied up in it. Because, you know, we see from, we see during climate change that the people most affected are the people who are at the lowest of the economic rung. And so these issues are all connected. We're going to have to tackle them at once with a huge program and a massive amount of investment into protecting the infrastructure and businesses that working people rely on.
Thank you. Candidate Summers?
Thank you. I know in my district, and you can call it a different issue, but I know food access. You know, we talk about a healthy environment and you can't have a healthy environment unless you have access to healthy food. Unfortunately, the last four years, Tangerine Plaza has set empty. One of the biggest failures to provide healthy food to a food desert is what I think has been taking place in District Six. And so, you know, paying attention to, again, these other environmental issues are going to be relevant. We can't just focus on food. We shut down Albert Woodard Water Treatment Facility a few years ago. And, you know, we have real serious threats where a small category one hurricane can lead to massive, you know, flooding and, and, you know, beyond sea level rise. We have to think about the infrastructure that, you know, the pipes that are going to people's houses. You know, how do we begin to help? It begins with connecting our residents to the resources, but again, being intentional about serving the residents of St. Pete first.
Thank you. And candidate Danner?
Yeah, certainly being a peninsula city and a peninsula county or a peninsula state, it is sea level rise that's going to affect us first. Certainly the tidal occurrences are going to be more intense and more often. When you combine that with what we're trying to do and play catch-up with our stormwater infrastructure and the needs to address that, we really got to tie the scientists and the engineers together to come up with a plan to address that first. And the other thing that's important is not all waterfront property. There's a lot of neighborhoods in flood zones that aren't on the waterfront. So they haven't had the opportunity to fortify the way the expensive waterfront communities have. There's low-lying areas in the middle of our city that get flooded more often. And those areas need to be addressed first to make sure those people are taken care of. It's definitely going to be a challenge, but that's definitely got to be the first job we deal with.
And Tara will ask the next question of candidate Danner.
Thank you. Candidate Danner, if you could change one thing about our zoning laws, what would it be and why?
Oh, one thing, huh? I went through the entire zoning change several years ago. We were operating on a 40-year-old zoning system when we adopted the one we have currently. One of the challenges is that we didn't address last time is we have a very gracious zoning ordinances. You can pretty much build anything downtown. It makes that difficult for working with developers when you want to sort of trade off. How can we get affordable housing? How can we do protect the character of our city? How can we include things that the community want because they really don't need anything from that? You can build so high and so much density that there really doesn't have to be those conversations. One of the goals that didn't happen out of our original Vision 2020 plan was to kind of, once the zoning categories were redefined, to make them a little more tapered as you get closer to the neighborhood, a little more down zoning, putting some higher things in the density. So we didn't do that. It's a very difficult thing to undo at this point.
Thank you. And candidate Driscoll?
Could you repeat the question for me?
Sorry, you broke up a little. Did you say repeat the question? Of course. If you could change one thing in our zoning law, what would it be and why?
Thanks. I would increase the opportunities for us to create missing metal housing in some of our neighborhoods that are currently only known for single-family homes. If we can make small density increases in our neighborhoods that are in the same scale and design as the rest of the neighborhood, we could actually help to increase opportunities for people who are moving here as our population grows. And then also it would ultimately create more affordable housing as builders can do smaller multifamily like duplexes and triflexes rather than building these giant single-family homes that we're seeing right now that are, that are just terribly overpriced. So that would, that would actually just create options for people for different kinds of homes and increase the neighborhoods where people could look for an affordable home. Thanks.
Thank you. And candidate Floyd?
Yeah, so I guess if I had to choose just one thing, and I don't know that it would solve all of our problems, but I would choose to increase density in our heavily traveled transportation corridors. I think this would do a couple of things for us. First, it would allow more housing to be built in the places that are easiestly accessible to travel. And so that means, you know, whether or not you have a car, but you can take our Bus Rapid Transit System or our current existing bus system. And this is going to allow for more affordable housing to be built in a place that's the most convenient for it to be built, where you can have the lowest transportation costs and it'll lower cost of living for a significant amount of people. And it can start to prop up the neighborhoods as well because you could have things like ground floor commercial services and businesses and shops that are on the edges of neighborhoods that people can walk to. And so I think if I could choose just one thing, I think I'd leave it there.
Thank you. And candidate Summers?
Thank you. You know, this is an important, this is an important thing to expand access to affordable housing. I think, you know, smaller builds are, are zoning for tiny builds are definitely an answer to, you know, people who are currently without homes. But, you know, zoning for multifamily use is definitely an answer for increased density. But I think, you know, we just kind of have an outdated zoning type. You know, we kind of have this suburban zoning type to our city and it's not really conducive for like housing and the business options of today. And so I know in South St. Pete, you have a lot of entrepreneurs who are maybe running their LLC out of their homes. And so, you know, how do we, you know, update this zoning type to bring us from the 1970s to 2021? We got to look at the needs of the people and match it accordingly. Thank you.
Sean is going to ask the next question of candidate Summers.
Thank you. How do you plan to address the disparity in low-income communities being able to access healthy food at affordable prices?
Thank you so much. So I'm very passionate about our underserved, historically excluded communities. You know, we are living in a city where these folks are most afraid of that the city is going to develop over them or develop without them. And so intentionality and being a bridge is how I plan to address a lot of the needs of that community, not only for food, but housing and economic development as well. We have, you know, a group, the Taste of the Islands Group, looking to bring a grocery store to Tangerine Plaza. At this point, I've spoken with a positive impact church where they're the only food that's going out of that plaza each and every week that's healthy. And they've been doing it for about 18 months now. And so there's funding available at the federal level. You got the USDA Food Desert under the Biden administration. And without the knowledge, the capacity or the intent to learn about how to serve these communities, they'll go another four years underserved and that's why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Danner?
Yes, I think one of the things we learned from the Tangerine Plaza was that transportation is an important component of that. PSTA, probably too late in the game, rerouted one of the buses and some of the commuter lines to go to the Tangerine Plaza. But when you talk to the residents, a lot of them said it was easier to make their transfer at the Grand Central Hub, walk across the street to Walmart and shop while they're waiting for the transfer, rather than go home and take a different bus to Tangerine Plaza. So I think transportation is a big part of that, on, on getting food closer to people so they don't need to take the bus and having what routes the system does have, address that need as well.
Thank you. Candidate Driscoll?
Thank you. So glad that you asked this question because nutrition insecurity is probably one of the topics that I'm most passionate about. We have enough food in our city. It's just not distributed equitably. That's why I have done a lot of work during my first term around this issue, establishing the St. Pete Food Policy Council to bring together people who are working in food access systems so that they can collaborate and advise the city on policy so that we can bring more food to more people. And in addition to that, our Healthiest St. Pete team is working on a healthy food access plan, which I am extremely supportive of. It's part, it's part of our Declaration of Food as a Human Right in our city. You know, there are just a lot of different ways that we have to approach this because there's not one magic bullet like a grocery store to cure everything. So we continue to work on these different initiatives to help to solve this problem and make sure everyone in our city has access to healthy food.
Thank you. Candidate Floyd?
Yeah, so there's, in my mind, two things that really need to happen for this to be successful and for there to be equitable access to food in our city. And the first is the short term is that we have to find a partner to be providing food to underserved communities, specifically Tangerine Plaza, but also beyond that as well. And, you know, if we can partner with a business, that's great. But in my mind, we need to make sure that we are offering a solution that is not motivated by, you know, private interests and private profit and is motivated by serving the needs of the people that live in that community. And so that looks like, you know, if the city can help things, help a cooperative or something like that, it would be ideal. And finally, I think you can't talk about this without saying, you know, we need to look at the systemic reason why there's a place in this, why there's places in the city where you cannot get healthy food. And that's because of under-investment in the communities. And it's not just food, it's healthcare access, it's, you know, accessibility to jobs and distance to all sorts of different services. And so we need to make sure that we invest in our underserved communities over the long term.
Veronica will ask the next question of candidate Floyd.
Thank you. Do you have any ideas on how to reduce gun violence in our city?
Yes, you know, I think this is something that's on everyone's mind right now. And so to me, what's most important to reduce gun violence is, again, two things. The first is that we have to prevent things from escalating to that situation. And I harp on this a lot, but we have to invest in people's futures. And it's just leading off of what I just said in the last question. And that's, you know, if we are not investing in underserved communities' futures and not saying like they're worth our time and they're worth the dollars that go to the rest of the city, then how are they going to look at their own future and say that it's worth their time to make sure that they don't mess things up? And so that's first is we have to invest in people. The second one is that, you know, things have been hard coming out of the pandemic and we've had an increase in homicides in the city. And we need to be providing social services to make sure that we don't, that everyone has what they need to make sure that they can communicate their thoughts and feelings. And I could go into depth further about this, but I'm going to go ahead and leave it there.
Thank you. Candidate Summers?
Thank you so much. I'm really passionate about this as there have been 26 murders in the city so far this year and many of them happening here in my district. And when you meet with the police chief, you know, he talks about a lot of these being sourced as domestic violence issues. And so, you know, I think we have to find a way to make better use of our dollars when it comes to mental health and the programs that we're putting out, making sure that we're in touch with the mentality of the very community that we hope to serve. But the other part of that and a big part of that as a council member is we have to be present. You know, when there are mothers dying, crying, it shouldn't be council members from other districts upholding these mothers when the murders are happening right here in District Six. I won't be out picking fruit while, you know, our, our community mothers continue to cry. I'll be present and at least accessible to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Danner?
Yes, I think we definitely have to look at the reasons behind this, giving people the jobs and hope and things that so they don't feel they need to resort to gun violence. It has been difficult with the pandemic and certainly we're so hamstrung by state and federal regulations on what you can't do with any sort of gun regulations at all. But certainly getting out there in the community and listening to people, again, like giving them that idea that we can get the jobs, we can provide hope for everyone and just kind of get, change the environment where everything isn't so intense and frustrating like it is now.
Thank you. And candidate Driscoll?
Thank you. In order to reduce gun violence in our city, it really takes everyone working together. I am so proud that we have one of the best police departments in the country and truly one of the best police chiefs. I talk with them a lot about this and I know that they do everything within their own capacity to address this problem. You can see that even last year when they, when we started talking about the call program and we got that underway and really just addressed a lot of these nonviolent calls with social workers to assist everyone with what they truly need. And, you know, Chief Holloway, he loves to do community outreach through the Officers Park Walk and Talk Program, things like that. I feel like our police department is doing a great job. It's really just that community members have to do their part to, you know, stick together, reach out to each other and make sure that they work with our police department in order to reduce gun violence. Thank you.
And we'll have Tara ask the next question of candidate Driscoll.
Thank you. What makes you best qualified to be candidate for the Office of City Council?
Thank you. You know, my, I have spent this first four years, my first term on city council, working day and night for the constituents that I serve and making sure that our city continues to move forward. We have so much success in our city and we're, we've created a lot of growing things here because of that. At the same time, we have a lot of our communities that are being left behind, that are not getting the resources that they need. And it is not something that is cured overnight. There's that progress that we see downtown didn't happen overnight, but we can take that and use that as a blueprint to help get the resources and get the success going in other parts of our city as well. That's what you've seen me doing the first four years of my term and that's what I'll continue to do in my second term as city council member. Thanks.
Was I muted?
Yes.
Candidate Floyd, your turn.
So I'm a public school teacher and a political organizer and I've seen firsthand, you know, the struggles of working families in St. Petersburg. I grew up in a working class home, went to public school in Florida and the situation's just not great for the most vulnerable people in our city. And so I've been aware of the challenges for a while and I'm experienced at making change to better people's lives. I've been a political organizer on campaigns like the fifteen-dollar minimum wage campaign that happened last year. And we were successful there and this week, six, over six hundred thousand Floridians are getting a raise because of the work that the organizers and the workers put in. And it'll be millions over years. I've worked on issues in the city, dealing with climate change, dealing with criminal justice reform. I've worked on issues statewide around voting rights. And as an organizer, I know how to get the community involved and I'll always look to get the community involved because it's not just about the change that one person can make, it's about the change that we can all make together.
Thank you. And candidate Summers.
Thank you. So, you know, I think I'm more qualified for this position because, you know, the, like I said, the needs in this district are just far too great. While I don't have four years of direct experience on council yet, I have a lifetime of experience bridging gaps in our community. Most recently, you know, these last five years, I've been working with community leaders, community stakeholders. I've worked for Congressman Charlie Crist. I've worked for Senator, Senator Darrell Rouson. I've worked for Representative Michelle Rayner. I'm the only candidate in District Six who has a college degree, bachelor's degree, let alone a degree in political science and a minor in entrepreneurship. So we're talking about the needs of economic development and how to get things done politically. You want to elect someone who has the relationships with key stakeholders who can reach across the aisle, not, you know, join the other side, but who can stand true to our principles and be democratic, get things done. I am that person and I'm ready to serve you. That's why. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Danner.
Thank you. When I moved to St. Petersburg, it was not the city that we see today. Downtown was quiet after six o'clock when the businesses closed. There was no Beach Drive as we know it. Central Avenue was not the bustling entertainment district. The universities weren't as built up as they were. I've got the experience and I know how to turn neighborhoods around. And what we've done in the past with the neighborhoods to make them successful, we can do that to other neighborhoods. We've got a blueprint to do it, worked on business districts, turning them from vacant corridors to thriving business districts for local artists, local restaurants, local businesses that can thrive. I know how to do those things. We spent time in the homeless shelters, working on the programs, finding solutions rather than just jailing people. There's just so many things, just the experience. The city's moving forward at a very fast pace. And I think what they need, what we need is more people with experience that know how to carry on and address these problems moving forward as well as training others to do so in the future.
Hi, this will be our final round before the closing statements and Sean will ask the next question to candidate Danner.
Thank you. What are your top three priorities if you were elected?
Well, certainly the thing we hear most about, I'm sure everyone agrees, is the affordable housing issue and how we're going to address that. I think we do a great job of taking advantage of county, state, and federal grants for different housing programs. What we need is our own revenue source. We need a housing trust fund that we can tap into. Anytime we get money from another entity, it has strings attached. It has to be spent on veterans, has to be spent on families, things that may or may not be the greatest need that we have. Also addressing some of the crime issues. It's prevalent in several areas of our city. I'm a big supporter of community policing. I think that was a great program that really motivated neighborhoods to get involved with their police and young people to realize the police aren't always the bad guys. And then thirdly, just, just the development in general. We begged for development for years. Now we've got it. We need to balance the development, take advantage of it, but not lose the character of our city in the process.
Thank you. Candidate Driscoll.
Thank you. I'm sorry, could you repeat the question for me, please?
What are your top three priorities if you were elected?
Thanks. As you can tell, I have some audio issues tonight. My top three priorities on city council are affordable housing, which is the first thing that people talk about when I ask them what's on their mind and what's important in our city. Making sure that our infrastructure improvements continue so that we have strong sewer systems, strong water resources, strong stormwater. These are not cheap fixes. They are not overnight fixes, but we have been making great progress and I'll continue to work on that to make sure that our infrastructure is modernized. And then, of course, economic development, not only helping our small businesses, but making sure that everyone in our city has the opportunity to find a job that can pay the bills so that we can all thrive and keep moving forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Floyd.
Yeah, so first and foremost, I think we need to focus on making a city that works for everyone and an economy in the city that works for everyone. And core to that is affordable housing. And it's not just, you know, subsidizing development of new housing and subsidizing private profit. It's, it's taking housing out of the marketplace through things like land trust and investment in improved public housing and moving towards a social housing. But we can't detach that from the fact that we need to help raise wages for people in the city and we need to make sure we're doing that in a way that's not displacing people. We're creating jobs that are suited for the people who are in this city now and we're training people in this city for new jobs. Next is to make sure that we have a secure future under, you know, environmental, like making sure that we're prepared for climate change. And so we need to invest in homes and infrastructure that, that working people rely on. And finally, we need to make sure that we can correct a lot of the inequity in the city that we've known for so long and make sure that we invest in the communities that are underserved because the city is more than just downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Summers.
All right. Thank you. So, you know, I definitely plan to put St. Petersburg residents first. If you're talking about economic development, you know, we need to make sure from housing to small business ownership that we're utilizing all the tools that are available from the four percent tax credits to maximize different housing options to, again, looking at how we can alleviate some of those tax breaks and variances on business owners that actually lead to benefits and jobs for St. Pete residents long-term. Not folks way up in Wesley Chapel, folks who don't live here. We have to make sure that we're maximizing those options. The second thing here is access to information, again, access to resources, being a true bridge for the community that is present for the community. So they don't have to come find me. But, you know, I want to come out and make sure that I'm meeting all of them with everything that our city has to offer that their tax dollars are paying for.
Thank you so much. Now it's time for our closing statements. The first candidate will be candidate Summers.
Can you hear me? My mute button got stuck there.
We can hear you now.
Awesome. Again, folks, my name is Marielle Summers and I am your candidate for District Six on our city council. I'm running in this seat because the need for equitable growth, it's there and it's far too great in our district. And I personally couldn't stand by and watch the neglect continue for four more years. You know, I grew up in this district and this is my home. So when I'm elected, I will address the growth needs in the district while ensuring visible equity and promoting sustainability and resiliency. I think it's hard for us to talk about accomplishments when the numbers show that our district has the highest concentration of African-American poverty in the city. Talk about accessibility and District Six is leading the city in the most households without internet access or access to a car. So we have to ensure that the opportunities to live, work, and play are abundant if we plan on keeping the talent that we're growing here. While my office will be accessible to constituents, I think the people of District Six can count on me to be present for the people. So again, I look forward to serving you. My name is Marielle Summers. Visit summersforstpete.com. Thank you guys for having me.
And candidate Driscoll.
To be able to serve our city these first, this first term on city council, we have so many big issues that we're dealing with right now with our growing population and environmental issues that are just staring us right in the face. The accomplishments that we have been able to achieve together during my first term are really and truly moving our city forward. From improvements in the way that we can build affordable housing in our city to creating an economy that's more equitable by helping our small businesses and making sure that people have more job opportunities. And then, of course, creating that culture within our city that everyone is not only welcome here, but everyone can, can succeed here and thrive here with their families. That's what I have been working on during the first term on city council and it's what I'll continue to do during my second term. Thank you.
Candidate Floyd.
Yeah, so thank you so much to everyone who put this on. My name's Richie Floyd. Running for St. Pete City Council in District Eight because I know there's a city that we all believe in, a city that, that works for everyone, a city that's got endless opportunity and we can really create that city and be the best city that we can if we come together. And so, you know, my background is with the community. It's in being a public school teacher. It's with organizing with the community. It's why we knock on so many doors on this campaign because when we come together, we can accomplish so much more. And so that's what I want to do as a city councillor is I want to make sure that I'm as connected to the community as possible, meeting them where they are and then working on the issues that are very important to us, making sure that everyone here has a roof over the head, not just those people that can afford it. I'm talking low to no income, making sure that everyone has food on their table, making sure that we're all secure in our future in uncertainty under climate change and making sure that those among us that have been discriminated against and not treated with the same respect and investment as everyone else have the opportunity to correct those injustices in the future. And so that's why I'm running and I hope to earn your vote on November second.
Candidate Danner.
Thank you. And I want to thank everyone for doing this. It is fantastic to see young people and students get involved in the government. You're the reason we do this. Everyone up here has one goal and that's to leave this city in a better place than when we found it. And I'm very appreciative of your involvement. My, my goal in this is to, again, do just exactly that, leave this city in a better place than when we found it. Got years of experience working on changing this city. What I bring to the table is no matter what the problems are, there's a process, there's a budget, there's a collaboration that has to occur. I have the experience to do that regardless of what the issue that comes up. Got seven colleagues every Thursday that you have to build a consensus with, build relationships with, a mayor that you may or may not agree with all the times, the city staff that has the knowledge. And then the community, being out there and having grown up with and worked with the community for so long. That's what I bring to the table is experience on day one so we can attack these issues. And I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you so much, candidates, and thank you to our students. A recorded version of this forum will be posted with closed captioning in English and also in Spanish on the League's Facebook page and the YouTube channel in just a few days. Please remember to register to vote by October fourth. You can find more information on the candidates, the referendum, as well as analyses of the charter amendments if you go to penellisvoterguide.com. And we hope you'll join us tomorrow night at seven as we'll ask questions of the two mayoral candidates. Please register at the Eventbrite link and you'll receive, excuse me, and you will receive your login code. Thank you so much and have a wonderful evening.